Good morning. We're going to get started with invocation from Councilman Larry McAtee and a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Todd Stone.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as your servants, give us wisdom as we plan for this next year. May the programs and may the decisions that we make be pleasing in your sight, and may they be beneficial to all our citizens. We thank you now for the way you've provided safety for us. Be with our neighbors who are hurting, encourage them. We thank you for all the blessings of life, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I call this meeting of the city council to order. We have no items from office of the mayor. We do have, under item four, items requiring separate votes. This isn't actually a vote, but it is a public hearing. It's part of the budget process. Of course, today's meeting is entirely devoted to presentations on the budget, but as part of our formal process, we have a series of public hearings. Of course, anybody can come here and talk about the budget in the next few weeks ahead under Citizens to be Heard, or whenever the budget appears as an item on the agenda. But here is sort of a place where we make sure that everyone has for sure had an opportunity to talk about the annual budget for fiscal year 2020. So is there anyone who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion of this meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, presentations and discussions of fiscal year 20, proposed budget. It looks like we have four departments presenting today, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Yes, so we've got four departments. We'll just introduce each one of them as they come up. And first up is Chris Browning with Utilities Department, our Utilities Director, and will present the Utilities budget.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good morning, Councilman Mayor. The Utilities Department budget starts on page C-167 in the budget book, and the performance data can be found on page G-141. To align with city council priorities, Utility Department developed a list of strategic initiatives, and I'll go through them and explain what we try to do based on each of these initiatives. First of all, is safety. We're responsible not only for a safe work environment for our employees, but also the public that we serve. Secondly, is customer service. We're committed to providing quality customer service and meeting expectations for effective service delivery. Water supply, securing and properly managing long-term and regional water supplies is a very high priority for the Utilities Department and for OQUIT. System reliability and resiliency. OQUIT will continue to maintain and upgrade our systems to minimize the likelihood of service disruption. Financial management, OQUIT and OCET consistently follow strong financial management principles and has obtained the highest available credit ratings for debt issuances. Both OQUIT and OCET have a AAA rating, which is kind of odd for large utilities, particularly solid waste management utility getting a AAA rating. Recently, Standard and Poor's and Moody's reaffirmed OQUIT's highest possible ratings for both long-term debt and for our commercial paper program. The ratings have a few different considerations today than they did in the past. They include the operations of the utility, the reliability of our system, proper asset management practices, strong financial management, and strong debt service coverage. In the past, they basically just looked at financial stability of the organization, but today they look at how well do you maintain your assets. And also, with climate change, they want to know how resilient you are. Many of our investors are insurance companies, and those insurance companies have taken a pretty good hit over the last couple of years with all the big storms, and people are tying that back to climate change, and there's some validity to that. So what they want to know is, how resilient are you in relation to climate change before they decide to invest? And OQUIT, when we get through with our capital program in the next 10 years, we'll have about $1.5 billion in debt. And so we're going to need some strong financial backing for that. So we need to make sure that our investors are comfortable with investing in our utility, in our city, so that we get really good ratings, really good ratings on our interest that we're paying. S&amp;P assigned OQUIT the highest score for both operational and financial management. Today, they score from one to six for both financial and for your operational, one being the best, and we scored a one on both the operations and on the financial stability of the organization. So we did a really good job there. And then regulatory compliance. We're committed to full compliance with regulations and the directives of all regulatory agencies. So with that, I'd like to get into the budget itself. We are predicting revenue stream of about $642 million this year. Service charges for water, wastewater and trash collection, we're predicting $336 million. Our debt construction funds, $239 million. That's $207 million for water and $32 million for wastewater. And I'll give you a rundown of the capital program towards the end of this presentation to give you an idea where we're going to be spending that money. And then withdrawals from cash reserve, $52 million to fund the award of the South Canadian Wastewater Treatment Plant improvements. Other sources totaling about $9 million include interest in service fees, interest in miscellaneous revenues of about $2.8 million, billing service fee charged backs about $3.3 million, OCET administration charge backs $1.3 million, flow fees $2.25 million, and then system development charges about $5 million. Now, the uses for those funds, the $642 million, we're projecting about $390 million for capital funds this year, capital funding for our improvements. Water will be $263 million, wastewater will be $124 million, and solid waste will be about $3 million. Our city utility operations this year is projected at $102 million. Water will be $62 million, wastewater $29 million, solid waste $11 million, and then our debt service currently is about $55 million. We have service contracts totaling about $53 million. OQUIT has a contractor who operates our wastewater treatment facilities, that's InfraMark. Their contract for the year is about $18 million. And then OCET contracts with waste management for the collection of trash outside the core of Oklahoma City, and also for recycling and bulky. They do all the recycle, and then they do the bulky in their service area as well. Their contract is about $24 million. And then we have landfill disposal fees of about $7 million, fleet maintenance primarily for our OCET vehicles, $3 million, and then other contracts for street sweeping and C&amp;G facility maintenance, those sorts of things, about $1 million. The trust operations is projected to be about $36 million this year, primarily for OQUIT is about $30 million for franchise fees and system lease payments to the city, about $7.6 million. Billing administrative services, about $5.4 million, supplemental repair services, about $1.5 million, banking and legal services, about $2.7 million. Repairs, we have contracted out a lot of our non-core business services like landscaping, concrete repair, roadway repair, those sorts of things, grass cutting, mowing. Parks and Rec does all of our mowing for us now. So that's about $9.3 million total. And then OCET professional service contracts, $4.3 million in franchise fees of $1.2 million. In addition, we plan to deposit about $4 million in the OCET reserve fund. That's both the operating and the storm debris fund. Right now, the storm debris fund is about $20 million, and that was our target. So we'll be depositing about $4 million, both in the operating reserves. So that gives us about a six-month reserve for operations, and then about $20 million. But to put it in perspective, one large storm can cost at least $20 million, maybe even more for cleanup. But the target was a $20 million reserve for that purpose. So with our initiatives this year, we have several that we focused on. One is customer service. We want to enhance the call center, the performance of the call center. We get about 500,000 calls per year, and what we'd like to do is kind of stage those calls in different groups. So most of the calls coming in are pre-routine. Our LFR goal is to get the calls answered within about 30 seconds of the first ring. So if we're dealing with a routine call, we can kind of quickly get through that one and get to the next call. But if it's a more complicated call, and it takes a little while, our customer service reps can get kind of hung up, and we can't answer those calls within 30 seconds of the first ring. So what we're going to try to do is ratchet them up to the next level, to a group that has a little bit more experience and more time available to work through those billing issues and those kinds of things. So we're going to kind of tier those calls when they come into the call center to help us with that 30 seconds of the first ring. And then the field operations folks, what we want to do is get them more training, so that when they go out into the field, they're not just looking at irrigation, or they're not just looking at plumbing, or they're not just looking at a meter trying to help somebody figure out why their bills may be a little high. They can do all those things. So we're going to try to train them better and have them better prepared to solve the problem rather than have to send somebody else out there to take a look to see what's going on. So in doing that, we want to reclass 24 positions to field quality representatives. And then to plan and schedule our work better, we created a planner-s scheduler position, and right now they're in line maintenance, and we have them at our treatment plants. But what we'd like to do is add them to customer service group as well, so that we can plan and schedule our works more effectively. So we're going to try to add two planner-s schedulers to the Fleet Services Division and also to wastewater quality division. So right now, I talked about LFR goals, answering the calls within 30 seconds. Our target is 90% of the time. We're currently at 86%. That's primarily due to enhanced training for some new technology that we put in place this year to help us better answer those calls and better manage the workload. So we expect to hit our 90% target pretty quickly. So we did have some citizen survey results that were pretty good this year for customer service. 91% satisfaction with residential trash collection services. The national average is 71%. So we're well above the national average there. On water services, national average is 68%, and we're at 78% satisfaction. And on wastewater service, national average is 63, and we're at 76%. So we're doing pretty well as far as our customers are concerned. So with water supply, we have a lot of facilities down in southeast Oklahoma. We have McGee Creek, we have Atoka, we have pumping stations. We're going to expand that with our new SARDAS permit. We'll have facilities on the Combeach River. So what I'd like to do is create a superintendent position for southeast Oklahoma to better manage that entire area. Logistically, it's a little difficult to manage properly from 100 miles away, so what we'd like to do is enhance the supervision down there. Right now, we have a superintendent at McGee Creek only. So we'd like to expand the superintendent's role for southeast Oklahoma to help us manage all of our facilities down there today and into the future. In our system reliability and resiliency, we're planning to restructure the water treatment plant organization. Right now, we have one shift who has proper management and supervision and enough staff to kind of set the operation for the facilities, to where they're testing for how much chemical we need to add, how well the plant's performing, and then on the other shifts, they're just kind of managing at those levels. And what we'd like to do is add a shift supervisor on each shift and add a few more operators, so that we can optimize the performance of our water treatment facilities, where we can do those tests and those calibrations, and that we can manage all of our assets properly throughout the entire 24/7 responsibility. So what we'd like to do is add five shift supervisors for both Hefner and Draper collectively combined. Now, four plant operators, and then these enhancements will help bring us within compliance with DEQ and POSH. It's not only just an operational requirement, but it's a safety requirement as well. The LFR goals, 95% of commercial customers in compliance with the pretreatment program. We have a number of commercial customers within the city, about 3,000, who have cooking facilities, restaurants and other facilities with kitchens in them. And we need to be able to manage the quality of their discharge, if you can call it that, on sewage discharge. There's a lot of fats, oils and grease coming into our system, and a very high percentage of our blockages are due to grease. So what we're trying to do is get all these inspected and permitted and managed properly. And so we're really looking hard at the commercial pretreatment program. Last year, we developed the program. We hired somebody to kind of implement that, but now they need some help to manage it. So what our goal is to have 95% of the commercial customers in compliance with pretreatment program. The other thing that we're trying to do is get all of our supervisors trained properly, so that we can manage regulatory compliance as well. We've given them a target of three years to complete a new UU class that was developed last year, where there's 136 classroom hours that targets specifically on supervision and management. And so all of our supervisors are required to complete that within three years, and that's from crew leader and above in our organization. And right now, we're on track to do that. Some of them are ahead of schedule, and some of them are on schedule. So we're using Metro Tech to do all that training for us, and it's going very well today. In the meter group, we have people performing maintenance on the meters. And to comply with ODEQ, anyone who operates, maintains, or repairs anything in a water system must be certified. And right now, the way we're structured, those people who worked on meters were not certified. So what we want to do is reclassify 28 positions. Those positions work on the meters. They may pull out a meter and replace that meter, or they may fix a leak on that meter or something like that. So it's a direct impact on public health. So we want to get all those employees certified as well. So we want to reclassify them as a distribution and collection operator rather than a meter service tech. So we're asking them all to go and get their respective certifications. So overall, in summary, the budget this year, if approved, would include 793 employees. That's in addition of six positions. I mentioned quite a few position changes, but we have a number of positions that are generally vacant, and so we're going to delete those and absorb most of our increases through those positions and salary savings from those positions. So we're adding a total of six. A total of 94 positions were actually impacted, which included 66 classification improvements. The budget change is primarily due to, that 2.4% primarily due to salary adjustments, merit increases, insurance and retirement that we normally would have through any budget year. $629,000 for position modifications and reclass improvements, and then there's an $880,000 reduction related to salary reserves and charge backs to the city. So the total change this year would be $2.5 million, which is about 2.4% of our city budget. So next, I'd like to talk about the capital improvements projected for the year. Those improvements will total roughly $390 million. We have just bid the Atoka Pipeline River Crossing section. We've been designing that thing and talking about it for quite some time, but we're going to actually start building it now. So we got our bids last week, and we're in the process of evaluating those bids, and we'll come before you all in the trust to award that contract shortly. We intend to bid at least one more segment this year. We're having a little trouble with permitting. We thought we were going to bid the segment just north of Lake Atoka. Unfortunately, there's a prehistoric Indian village right there that we're having to work through. So we're having to change that to the next segment up, and we're working through another issue with our beetle friends and a few other endangered species, but we expect to get those cleared up pretty quickly and get those permits issued. The estimation for that project this year is $159 million. The total project is going to be about $500 million in construction and about $200 million for the pipeline. So a total of about $700 million. And then we want to upgrade our South Canadian Wastewater Treatment Plant. Right now, it's rated for 6 million gallons a day. We need to increase the capacity to 9 million gallons per day, and we also need to enhance the treatment once we increase that plant capacity. So the project cost there is expected to be about $80 million. And then every year, we replace failing water and sewer lines, so we have $16 million set aside to do that this year. We have an asset management program where, last year, we awarded a contract to inspect all of our sewer throughout the entire city, about 3,000 miles of pipe, to help us better schedule our capital program for the enhancements and the repair and the replacement of our wastewater collection system. So that contract this year is about $8 million. And then we're going to continue to work on the Hefner-Draper interconnect. That's where we're running a water line for potable water, for treated water between Hefner and the Draper treatment facility, so that if one goes down, either facility can serve the city. So we have about $3 million set aside for that this year, and we're about a year away from completion on that project for the physical connection. Some of the outlying extensions will be about five years out, but right now, we'll have those two plants connected within about a year. And then we have a few other facility improvements. The Hefner Water Treatment Plant, $27 million is projected for a lime system and carbon dioxide improvements. That's to enhance the water quality. From Hefner, we get the water down the North Canadian, and we don't have a lot of control over the quality of that water, so we have to add lime, and we have to add carbon dioxide to help us with settling and help us with taste and odor. And so we're going to replace those two systems. They have exceeded their useful life. And then at Draper, we're going to improve the chemical systems. We need to automate some large valves, and then there's some building upgrades that we need to initiate down there, and that's about $9 million. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let's see if I can do this. Well, thank you so much. I know Nikki got to go to her water treatment facility. I did as well on a separate occasion, and we talked about how impressed we were with just the knowledge of the staff and all the work you all are doing to deliver safe, clean drinking water to our residents. And particularly, you know, I was speaking with, I think, the plant manager who was on duty at the time, and just his, like, very proactive view of making sure that we aren't getting close to, you know, anything dangerous being in our water was just really impressive and amazing. Speaking to climate change, as you did earlier, I'm curious if foreseeing or forecasting, you know, in 10, 20 years, what you think that we as a city should be doing as it relates to water resiliency and to make sure that we do have, you know, a sustainable water system going forward. If there's anything that we as residents can be doing, we as the city itself, as an organization, to just ameliorate and adapt to climate change going forward?
Well, there's two things. Number one, we make sure that we have adequate water supply for the whole region. So we're a regional water provider. We provide to 19 other cities and rural water districts within the region. So we have enough water at our current usage rate and the projected population that'll last us through 2060. But we are working very hard every day to reduce that water consumption per capita. We have actually an award-winning water conservation program. The governor gave us an award last year for our program. And so we're very deliberate about asking our people to use less water. We have a group set up that does nothing but that. They go to people's home, and they'll do an irrigation audit, they'll do a plumbing audit, they'll do those kinds of things. All of the member cities, or all of the cities who we provide water wholesale, have adopted our conservation program. So we're very assertive in that regard. And we're also starting to look at future supply. Where's our next water supply going to come from? But right now, we're good through 2060, and hopefully beyond that. The other thing, we treat the wastewater to a very high level, and then we put it back in the river, and it flows to Texas. What we're going to try to do is use more of that for those things that don't require potable water, like large industrial applications, chillers. We provide OG&E water for their power plants right now, and we're going to try to get more and more people to use our treated wastewater for large irrigation, for industrial, for chillers, for big data centers, things like that. So that will help us lower our water footprint even further, because we don't have to put that water back. We can use it over and over, and right now we're just using it once and letting it go. So we're working on that as well.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll echo what Councilwoman Hammond said, and thank you again. I said it last week publicly for our council comments, but thank you again for that tour. We had a great time, and also, I have to publicly say again, thank you for saving my life.
Yeah, that-
You single-handedly saved me.
That critter was really dangerous.
But again, it speaks to the care that you all have, and especially, I've mentioned again, Darren, because he is very knowledgeable about what happens with the water, and I know he carries that with all of the other folks that work with him and under him to make sure that they are just as passionate about what they're doing. And also, Mr. Sam as well, with his commitment to just being the engineer piece of understanding what's going on. So with that, I think me and Joe Beth, we were just giddy and smiling, talking about how we are so excited about clean water. how we are so excited about clean water, and those are the conversations you want to have. So we appreciate all that you all do and looking forward to more to come. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words, and we really appreciate your time as well. And we would invite everyone to come out and take a look at our facilities. If you have interest, just let us know, and we'll be happy to schedule it.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Parks and Recreation Department, and Doug Cooper, our Parks and Recreation Director, will be making the presentation on the budget.
Thank you. Wow. Stacy gets us set up. I want to thank the city manager for putting me behind the water utilities. Going from $1.7 billion down to $32 million, kind of bring your thoughts a little closer to home as we go through this. We're handing out hats for you. This has got our new icon on it that we are going to start marketing pretty heavily this year. We've got a campaign getting ready to kick off called "Love Your Parks," and you'll see more and more about that as we go forward. Our budget is found on page C109 in your budget book. This year, the city went, need to go forward. There you go. The Parks Department decided that we needed to modernize our mission statement and our vision statement. The mission of the Oklahoma City Parks is to provide cultural, social and recreational experiences to our community so that they can have the opportunity to cultivate wellness and enjoy a healthy lifestyle. And the vision for that is OKC Parks inspires our community to explore, learn, grow and The core principles for the National Parks and Recreation Association is health and wellness, conservation and social equity. And we hold these three facts true to our hearts here in Oklahoma City. Five years ago today, I stood before you and announced that the City of Oklahoma City Parks and Recreation Department, well, I stood before Mr. McAtee, Mr. Greiner and Mr. Greenwell five years ago today, expressing that the City of Oklahoma City Parks and Recreation Department is the largest healthcare provider in Oklahoma City. And we have done nothing but strive to increase that opportunity to our citizens, and we will talk about some of those here in a little bit. Conservation is true to our heart. We want to make sure that we are protecting the natural resources that we have. We all were talking about global warming or the climate change, whatever you want to put that as when we were talking with the Water Utilities Director. We have a big play in that, too. We want to make sure that we're establishing quality stormwater management practices when we're designing parks, creating rain gardens, things along those lines, preserving and protecting. And we took one step to that. We preserved and protected another mile-long section of Bluff Creek with the acquisition of Lone Oak Park on the north side of town, let alone preserving and protecting what could be a 200-year-old bur oak on the north side of town. And then social equity. It's all about that for, you know, public parks and recreation were created in the '50s just for that purpose, social equity. It wasn't coined back then, but we were the point of contact for those folks that couldn't afford a country club or being able to go to the Catskills or the U.P. of Michigan. We were the staycation places even in the '50s, and social equity is a main thrust of Parks and Recreation. OKC Parks has four levels or four business centers. We have recreation, which is led by our Chris Hamilton, the division manager, done with the department almost 30 years, grew up in the recreation division and leads that enterprise. Grounds Management is headed up by Todd Reese. He is a licensed landscape architect. He has been a consultant. He has been a Parks and Rec Director across the nation as well. And I think our parks are meeting, starting to meet the expectations of our citizens because of the fine management we get from Todd Reese. Natural Resources is headed up by Scott Copeland, another landscape architect. He brings a real camaraderie to his organization. He's the smallest center, but he has one of the largest impacts because his people take care of the Bricktown Canal and all of the color beds that you see around town are taken care of by Scott Copeland's folks. And then our administration section. And to say nothing of the fact that we have six trusts and/or committees or commissions that we manage or help to provide sectorial services to. And of course, the biggest of those is the Oklahoma City River Redevelopment Authority, which has a trust specialist, David Birch, leading that opportunity. Then our golf commission, our trust specialist there is Jeff Moser, and he's been in a little more than two years, and I think he's brought some dynamics to the cost centers there at the golf courses. With his help, he's been able to bring new enlightenment to our golf commissioners. The first one that I'd like to expound upon is the Recreation Division. Obviously, some of the biggest things that we have going on in that is the aquatics, the athletics and general recreation. Our aquatic program, even though we went from 50 swimming pools maybe 15 years ago down to five swimming pools across the city now, it's a robust program. We still have free swimming pools available to our citizens to go and enjoy when it gets hot down at Woodson and Northeast Rec Center. Our free pools. Our family aquatic centers are, we're state-of-the-art. They're getting, they're starting to show their age, but again, we have an aquatics group that works very hard with General Services, Paul Bronson's people, to make those things dynamics and well-received. Obviously, we want to make sure that we stay on the cutting edge of those performances. And even though the City of Moore opened up a family aquatic center, took some of our business from Early Wine, we're still holding our own at about 59,000 visitors at our family aquatic centers across the city. I think one of the big things that I want to point out is with the addition of the two new open MAPS senior health and wellness facilities, we are now approaching 20,000 seniors that were helping to stay healthy and well at the two MAPS senior health and wellness that fall under our jurisdiction, let alone the two senior centers that we operated before the MAPS ones opened up. So we have four active senior centers, and obviously, as you know, we've got two more that are on the drawing pages, and we're looking forward to serving more seniors as we go forward. One of the big changes that we have, we're kind of like what you heard from the Water Trust, we're trying to find better ways to perform our business. One of the big changes in our budget is in recreation, and we are going to be deleting eight community center directors so that we can add 12 more program coordinators to our centers. This gives us an opportunity to create more robust programs. We will have 12 people to get out into the community around our existing facilities to meet with the neighborhoods, to meet with the children, to meet with the seniors, meet with the housewives that live in those areas, to create programs specifically to meet their needs. So we're looking forward to having that opportunity going forward, having these 12 new program coordinators in our organization. And the other big thing is in Mr. Stone's Ward, we acquired the Eight Field Softball Complex. Used to be the Boomer Softball Complex. We haven't renamed it yet, but it's closed currently so that we can go in there and refurbish it, bring it up to city standards. We will be back playing softball, and we think youth baseball on these fields next year, so we're looking forward to that as well. The Grounds Management Division, our largest that we have, they are taking care of 6,000 acres of parklands, but they're also taking care of nearly 6,000 acres of Water Trust property through that organization. I think one of the big things that has come online this past year is we are providing tree clearance maintenance for the streetcar, the modern streetcar. We're making sure we're keeping the tree limbs out of those crosswires. All of our foresters have been trained and certified to work around those power lines. They understand the importance of keeping those lines clear, so I think that's one of the big things that we have going on. We feel very strongly about making sure that our environment is properly managed. Mr. Cooper mentioned to me some concerns that the citizens have about spraying our parks. We have certified applicators that are on staff. We will look into the claims that we did it during the windy days. They are all trained to make sure that they do not spray when the winds get to a certain level. I think one of the things that we are really important from a grounds maintenance management perspective is the quality of the product that we're providing our neighborhoods. And I think one of the things that shows that is the satisfaction in our LFRs have gone up. We're, like the water treatment plant, Water Utilities is maxing out the national average. We are as well in grounds maintenance. And again, one of the big things that we're adding this year is the sports complex. They will be managing or maintaining the sports complex going forward. I do want to point out, in the five years that I've been here, and I'm proudly wearing my five-year pin because I've been here five years today, is the addition of sports facilities, quality sports facilities. Not only have we recently acquired the 240 Sports Complex, but we have renovated and improved five other sports fields in our holdings. Three of them up at Stars and Stripes and three more down, and that makes six mathematics. I need to go back to remedial math. We have improved six ballfields, Diamonds, three up at Stars and Stripes, three at Wheeler, and we look to add some more with that. Obviously, we hung on to the Window Wasen Hunt, Wisen Hunt Sports Complex that gave us custody of 12 youth soccer fields. So we are providing more opportunities for our youth to participate in sports through our programming and not necessarily through other nonprofits or suburbia. The next line of business is our natural resources. Again, as I mentioned, we do the canal, the Bricktown Canal. We have the Fisheries Management, one of the only municipal fisheries in the country is here in Oklahoma City. We're providing nearly three-quarters of a million fish into our close-to-home waters as well as our reservoirs annually through that program. We have taught thousands of people how to fish, not just kids, but adults as well. We have also, the Will Rogers Garden has been completely refreshed. We worked with the Community Foundation and Asboys Trust to reestablish the historic arboretum that was at Will Rogers. We've had trees in there almost 100 years, so we want to make sure that we keep up with that historic lineage of native trees at Will Rogers. And the usability, one of our measurements is how often or how many hours the exhibition center is available for rental, and we're on track to be up 14% this year over last year. So the citizens have discovered that jewel, and they're maximizing their use of that jewel, and as well as Martin Park Nature Center. One of the big changes for natural resources will be the addition of the Oklahoma Boulevard. We will be accepting that when it's finished and completed in the planting this year. Some of the key factors that those medians, that adds another 20 acres to our holdings in the city. It adds 23,000 square feet of high-end performing beds, if you will, flowering shrubs and flowering plants. And we will be adding a few new people to the organization to take that on. The other is one of the increases in our budget that you will see, again, if you do the mathematics, we are increasing the management fee for the twin downtown parks, Mired Gardens and Scissor Tail. That accounts for about a $540,000 increase into the natural resources budget overall. Going on to administration, again, we have quite a few partners out there that we work with, but within our organization, our planning staff, we have three, again, three landscape architects working in the planning organization. Right now, since January 1, we have 67 active geo-bond projects going on that they're helping manage. They're going out there and doing site visits to make sure that the contractors are doing what they're supposed to be done, and they participate in public meetings to get it done. I want to point out that we have a famous person in that picture, it's Mrs. Stonecypher. The General Business and Administration Division, headed up by our own Mike Smith. His staff will produce about 4,800 permits to rent our facilities and do activities to the citizens of our organization. As I also mentioned, we staff six different commissions and trusts. Marketing, even though we eliminated our PIO marketing position three years ago during budget cuts, we added a new PIO with a strong emphasis on marketing. Our own Stacy Hamm is here today with us. We're looking forward to selling the product that our staff has been creating, and I know it's hard for us to assume that there's anybody that has a product other than the water utilities to sell, or maybe parking and transportation, but Parks and Recreation does have a product to sell. Even if it's a free product, we want to know, we want the citizens to know that we have these facilities available to them, that they can capitalize on anything. We are offering English-as-a-second-language classes. We are offering bookkeeping classes besides the normal aerobics and jazzercise and things along those lines. So we are a complete neighborhood service center, in our opinion, and we want to make sure that the citizens learn about all that we have available through that. Our summer guide last year had 1,250 programs that we offered across natural resources and recreation. So we try to get it out there for the people to participate in. Community partnerships, we couldn't survive without partnerships. This year, even though we had 60% of our partners respond, we had some really weird numbers that showed up. Volunteers were down 25%. Even though this is the first time we've hit 60% of our partners responding, usually we're around 30%. 60% of them responded, we were down 25%. But our volunteer hours went up 49%. So we had fewer people, but they were doing more work. So we are just flabbergasted in awe of our volunteers across the system. And our volunteer labor and materials was up 35% as well. So we went from a $6 million budget saving last year at this time to an $8 million. We would have had to have an $8 million infusion to our general fund budget to do all that was done by our volunteers. So we're extremely excited about, and it's all driven by the staff, the local, the naturalists at Martin Park, they cultivate those people, the program coordinators, the naturalists at Will Rogers, they cultivate those folks, and we're getting people into our rec centers and helping with programming there as well. Some of the things, the Leading for Results, again, council priority and enhanced recreation opportunities and community wellness. As you all know, we first came on the scene in this in 2014. The city council reaffirmed the importance of this Leading for Results, this priority in 2017, and we have not let you down. We are trying to exceed your expectations for getting people out and participating in your parks and recreation. Some of the leisure trends that we are all faced with across the country, but it is pretty strong here in Oklahoma City, and that's, you know, the changing of the demographics. Every neighborhood, every year, changes its demographics. We have less children maybe in one neighborhood, then all of a sudden, another neighborhood explodes with youth. So we have to be out there watching and making sure that if we don't have adequate playgrounds or we have a park that was mostly passive because it used to be mostly older adults living there, we've got to be ready to be able to spring forward and get a playground or something in there to bring the kids out to the parks. We need to make sure that we have connectivity. And of course, the strategic result is increase the satisfaction. We need to make sure that we get out there and visit with the neighborhoods and provide new parks or new assets in those parks. Some of the other numbers that we pay close attention in Parks and Recreation is the National national trends, and we've, we've all seen the, I guess, the best anachronism is our grade card. You know, most cities are running about one park per 2,000 citizens. We're running one park for 4,000. Now, that, we have to look at that with the eye that we have here in Oklahoma City. You can go any place inside the city limits and find hundreds, hundreds of acres of open land that we don't necessarily need to own. People can get their groove on, on their own properties around the city. So I have this, trust me, for nearly 42 years, I've had this conversation with the national organizations, whether it's Trust Republic and or the National Parks and Recreation Association. You gotta, you gotta understand that the marketplace is such for Chicago or Boston or New York City where land is important. When you get in between the Mississippi and the Rocky Mountains, we've got a lot of wide-open spaces. So it's something we still want to be related to, we want to understand the impact of that. The other one is the number of full-time employees, you know, national average is running 8.3 full-time equivalents to 10,000. We're running about 4.4. So I think we're doing quite a good job with what we have. If you look at our, our survey results and see the, how many people like the work that we're doing, how many are enjoying the fact that we are producing. This, this again, we get this out of our national trends, we get this in our own surveys that we do, our own studies. These are based on our peer cities, which is obviously the metroplex just south of us down through to San Antonio, but other places like Kansas City, Missouri, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Miami are our peer cities as it relates to body count. And I think we have a good showing as it relates to that. On our outdoor athletic facilities, I think that also transcends into quality of recreation programs and facilities. We have hired Prose Consulting out of Indianapolis to do a study of our sports fields, see what we're lacking, see what we should be producing, what our goal is short-term and long-term, how many soccer fields we need or don't need, how many diamonds we do need or don't need, things along those lines. That report will be brought forward to you all here in the next coming months so you have an understanding of where we're at as it relates to national trends for sports Service areas, the issue is make our city and neighborhoods more attractive places to live and work, and we try to make sure that our strategic result is met, and that's increasing the availability of parks, open space, and recreational cultural services are available. Right now, we're running about 65% of our citizens within a half-mile of a park element. That includes our trail system. And with the advent of Will Rogers Trail last year, that brought more of our citizens in contact with park assets for them to be able to get exercise or get to the next place that they can get quality exercises. Our HORT staff planted 625 trees, but some of you know that we have community partners that plant trees too. The Community Foundation, for their 50th anniversary, just planted 800 more trees on the river. We'll have probably 1,000 new trees on the Boulevard. So just our staff alone planted 625 trees, we're trying to up that game. And of course, this year, we're offering 1,870 programs. The, the major budget, as I said, the administration budget is $5 million. We still count Civic Center, we're, even though the foundation manages that for us now, it's still near and dear to my heart that we make sure that it's successful. The 850,000 you see there is their management fee to make sure that they bring quality programs and take care of the other partners there. And of course, you can see the other budgets. We'll be authorized for 178 full-time positions. Major budget changes, as I talked about, we deleted the eight center supervisors to create the 12 new rec programmers. We're adding eight new positions for the, the change in 240 Sports Complex. We added four new positions and equipment into the, for the Boulevard. And of course, the, the management fees, as I mentioned, went up approximately $540,000. Some of the big things that I wanted to go on, go ahead Stacy. This one's real important to us, I think. This is a 100% handicap accessible baseball diamond over Route 66 Park. We're going to be able to teach wheelchair-bound children how to play baseball. We're going to be able to, to program this site for, for the physically challenged to learn the sport of baseball. We're already in contact with some of the Wounded Warriors groups to see if we can't get a Wounded Warriors Baseball League going out here. It is real close to being finished. We will have a dedication of it as soon as it's done. Obviously, a wet winter has slowed us down, but we're real excited about being able to have this facility to offer our citizens in Oklahoma City. This is one of our new health and wellness. I want to show you the quick video. The gentleman closest to us in the red shirt, if you don't know it, that's Chief Kelly. On the other side, across from competing is Paco, the most recent deputy chief in the police department. This was a police versus fire competition at our new fitness court in the Boathouse District. We have five of these across the city. We're real excited about programming these. Again, bringing free health and wellness gymnasium into the neighborhoods and communities.
I went last night to Stars and Stripes Park to go see the fitness court, and it was amazing, all the people using that fitness court. And so I think it'd be helpful, you say there's five, where else do we have the other four in Oklahoma City besides Stars and Stripes?
Starting from south to north, we have one down at Woodson Park, we have one on, another one on the river at, at Manuel, not Manuel Perez, but Wiley Post Park. Then we have one in the center section in Nikki's District over at Douglas Park, and then the one up at Stars and Stripes. And of course, this one is in the Boathouse District. So we're excited about this new health and wellness opportunity. We'll go on to the next big thing that we opened up this year. We have another short video. Gentleman in the center screen that just did a jump, that broke his skateboard is the famous Tony Hawk, came in for our dedication. It was a real treat. We had, we had 10 of the top skateboarders in the United States at the dedication of Stars and Stripes. In the background on the left-hand side, you can see the Stars and Stripes Fitness Court there. We completely renovated the Bob Hope Pavilion out there. So Stars and Stripes has got a whole fresh appearance for this, this spring and summer. So we're real excited about all the new activities out there. Some of the, the 67 projects we got going on, Pitt's Rec Centers getting a facelift, a new basketball court, new wall coverings, we're real happy to be able to provide that for that neighborhood. Then working with the Planning Department and the SNI Group, we were able to refurbish John F. Kennedy Park at 16th and basically 16th and MLK. We had somewhere around $300,000 in 2007 geo-money, all toll with the federal dollars that we invested, $1.2 million in that park to make it a, a new hotspot for the neighborhood. One of the things that we're proud of, for last year, for the first time ever, the National Recreation Park Association actually considered bringing a national forum to Oklahoma City. Most of the people I've worked with for 40 years had never set foot in Oklahoma City. They came, they saw, and they brought 50 of the top Parks and Rec professionals in the United States in to learn about maps and what it's done from an economic boom for our city. So we were happy to be able to host that. We, we know that Parks and Recreation is usually in the top three when the CVB or the Chamber of Commerce is trying to sell us to new businesses. This is a quote from Amazon, I know we didn't get their world headquarters, but, you know, they want to invest in a community where our employees will enjoy living, recreational opportunities, educational opportunities, and an overall quality of life. Tell us what is unique about your community. We hold that near and dear, and we think we are a major player in the economic development of our city. And with that, you have approximately a dozen Parks and Certified Parks and Rec Professionals providing program activities in your city. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Congratulations on five years.
Thank you.
You mentioned this sports field study that's going to be coming to us soon, and I look at, you know, we have an additional 12 fields at Weisen Hunt, we have additional five fields at Lightning Creek, we have the softball fields in Ward Four. But when I also look at other cities like Overland Park and Frisco and Wichita, we're a little behind as far as field development is concerned. Can you tell us what we hope to glean from this study and what you already know?
Well, I think what we hope to glean from it is what we're doing right, first and foremost, what we have in place, what sports we are lacking in, and the early findings, of course, they had to add in the 240 Sports Complex since we acquired it while they were doing the study, but we are short on diamonds, quality diamonds for our players to learn baseball and softball. With the advent of women's softball being in the Olympics again, we see a spike coming for women's softball in our community, and we want to make sure we're positioned for that. But they're also looking at our tennis courts and things along those lines. But I think the one thing that we're lacking over other cities are all-weather sports fields, the artificial turf complexes. A lot of cities are really investing heavily in, in those type of things, and they'll have a dozen all-weather so that if they have a tournament come to town, if we had had a tournament come to town last weekend, they wouldn't have been able to play much. So I think that's what we're going to glean from it. And, and how we manage those and how they, how they are rented or how they're programmed will be part of that study as well. Other questions?
Thank you for your presentation. When Councilwoman Hammond and I met with your department during our orientation, we sat across the room from each other, she and I, and I think we just, we were glowing listening to you all's, just your, your understanding of public parks as public health. I, I can't stress this enough. Two things. One, I met with a friend yesterday at a coffee shop, and I was a little disappointed when I talked with this person about the importance of parks. Really did not seem to understand this. Could you just for a moment explain the public health outcomes that we see when a city invests in its public parks? How would you sum that up, like, especially in this moment where healthcare is on everyone's mind?
Well, I think the important factor to remember is not only the physical activities that we provide for, you know, the obvious sports that we talked about, the fitness courts we just put in there, just the walking and jogging trails that we've added to almost every park in the city, it's the green space, it's the open space. If, if you've ever read the book, No Child Left Indoors, you'll find out that our children, those that may need chemical to get them through the day, they don't need those, those pills, those drugs if they spend 30 to 45 minutes outdoors. They are more attentive in classrooms. We all know that, that if we get outdoors after a bad stressful day, it goes away. We, we walk amongst the grasses and trees. So we have it from A to Z. We, we provide not only for your physical well-being in those activities that we provide and the programs we offer, but we have the mental side of things covered as well. We are less likely to be aggressive if we are, we spend time in the outdoors looking at the green grasses and trees. So, so I think that's, that's the aspects. We can, we can make you fit and trim in your body, we can also do it for your mind when we appropriately have those spaces available.
It's, it's everything. It is everything that we need to have our attention focused on right now for these kids is what you just described, and their families in the neighborhoods. The second thing is I had the honor of touring Boys and Girls Club in Ward Two at 36th and Western. And for those of you who haven't been yet, please go, anyone watching, anyone up here, it's incredible because it complements what you're talking about, you know? That facility is located there in that park, right? And so the kids can be outside, they've done community gardens, but everything of the last four years of me being at Jefferson Middle School just crystallized in that tour for me at Boys and Girls Club. Like, for those kids to have a place to play basketball, food after school, and for many of them, their parents are working two, three jobs, so there's no one home to make sure they're doing homework. There's no one home to make sure they're even eating dinner. And that's not because the parents are terrible, it's because the parents are working every last bit of themselves to even provide what they're doing. And that's a story I heard time and time and time again from those kids and their families. So to see Boys and Girls Club provide basketball courts, a place to eat, a library, a room for the kids to play video games, like, they're playing Fortnite on PlayStation, a game I still haven't played, but those kids talk about Fortnite more than I talk about movies up here on council. It's a thing.
Is that possible?
I didn't think so. No, but they, they'll play Fortnite, and then they go play basketball, and then they go out into the park, and then they garden. It's the holistic approach to the individual, and I want my time here on this council to be spent having conversations about getting our kids away from the screens, but not entirely, taking those screens into their parks. One of the things I saw from your quote that's been on my mind throughout the entire city council election, and now that I have the honor of serving up here, there's this, have you been to Cabbage Town in Atlanta, Georgia? The walls, the walls, when you walk around that neighborhood, murals, art, advertisements for punk bands coming in town, we need that. We need that everywhere. What makes us unique from Dallas? I get so tired of people being like, Oklahoma's North Dallas, whatever, who cares? Like, we should, when we are attracting tourists here, we should be attracting them here because of Paseo, because of Military Park, because of the neighborhoods, not because of these big fancy, we're not going to be Disney World. And I, I just really hope that that's the mentality going forward. I sensed a little bit of sadness in your voice with the budget that you all have in there.
There's no sadness, trust me, I'm happy to have what we have.
Well, there's a sadness for me, and I want to see it increase because I heard what my kids said, when they just had fun hanging out on their field trip here, just hanging out on the lawn outside, just those chairs you all put in outside.
Just so you know, you take that Boys and Girls Club and multiply it by 13, and that's what you have available right now in your Recreation Division in the rest of the city. We have three, 13 facilities just like. They're not as, as big and as elaborate as the Boys and Girls Club has grown to be in Memorial Park, but you have 13 of our older assets. Most, most of them are in your ward and Ms. Nice's ward and, and Ms. Hammond's wards, but we have 13 of those functioning right now, and they do almost the exact same thing. And we're happy that Boys and Girls Club is one of our partners, we're happy that PAL is one of our providers, they take up, PAL takes up another one of our locations, in fact, has two more. So, so, but the Recreation Division has 13 facilities that we're programming and operating in that way.
Oh, just real quick, I want to thank Parks, Veronica, Danielle, Melinda, for sitting with my Jefferson Middle School students during that field trip. They asked, the Parks Department asked the kids, what do you want in Taylor Park behind Jefferson Middle School for recreation like this? You all made their day. You, you made their day.
Well, that's who we're doing it for, so we're happy to do it.
So thank you all so much.
I just, I had a couple of things I wanted to mention. First, as council members in our different areas, how can we better advocate for our parks? I, I know most of us have quite a few parks, and I believe I have a whole bunch of parks, but I would like to see how we can utilize them more, how we can advocate more for that. And my second question is kind of a twofold because it's a concern about infrastructure when it comes to some of our, our facilities that we have, our recreational centers, especially unfortunately, in, in our ward. A lot of them have been built in the 1940s, and you don't see a lot of improved, major improvements done to them. We see a few things that are done, but we obviously need, need a lot more done when it comes to those. So I guess those are some of the questions, and who is responsible when it comes to some of those infrastructure improvements? And the two things, two places that I mentioned for sure are Foster Center and obviously the... obviously the Lincoln Center because of the grave concerns that a lot of our residents are having with, when it comes to being, just going in there, being a part of the program and just being in the building itself. So those are a couple of my questions, and I may have another after your answers.
Politically correctness. I think what has transpired at Foster is when the YMCA wore it out, they turned it over to the city, and we've managed to keep it functioning for that section of the city all these years. It was used up, that's why they left it. I think the aquatics staff keeping that pool and the boilers going for the indoor pool, not only is it self-preservation because that's where we have taught a lot of lifeguards, how to be lifeguards, where we taught a lot of young people how to swim and then become lifeguards. But I think it's a philosophical thing. When we created the 2017 GEO Bond, we looked at parks from a holistic perspective to go in and do it new completely, whereas predecessors had planted seeds, if you will, done a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here, a little bit here, and they didn't see it as a need to be, let's get rid of the old and get brand new. And I think one of those, you'll see that in the Douglas Rec Center as it comes online, as we design and build that new facility. That'll be the first full-service rec center the city has had, other than the MAPS Senior Health and Wellness Facilities that are only for 50 and older. So I think that's the reality. I think it's a different look at what the system needs and trying to go at it from that perspective to provide that. When the city went 20 years, the department went 20 years without funds at all from the voters. They voted no on two 10-year propositions. I think you saw the decline of the rec centers in Oklahoma City. And instead of closing them and demolishing them, they handed them off to nonprofits to try to operate and made it their responsibility to maintain them going forward. And again, they were probably wore out when they were turned over to those nonprofits. And they have been able, they have been trying to take care of buildings that probably should have been torn down and not put them in a place where they had to spend more money than what their donors are willing to put up for.
Okay. Well, I know we can continue that conversation a little further and more in depth to be more specific, but as, again, the first question as council members, what can we do further to help with parks in order to see?
Invite us to any neighborhood meeting that you attend. We've got very knowledgeable staff that we can make multiple meetings on any given night. We love to talk parks and recreation. We love to make it happen for the neighbors that are going to use the facility. If they're not coming there now, why aren't they? What do we need to do to make the changes to bring them to the parks, whatever those changes may be, programming-wise or activity-wise? But we want to talk to the neighborhoods. We want to get out and understand what it is. Again, that's why we've created these 12 program coordinators positions so that we will have even more people that will be in tune with the community and can get out and talk to them on a regular basis to see how we're doing, get our own report card going. You know, when we look at the LFR and we see that we're 58 or 62% citizens happy with us, but then when we survey participants actually doing things at our parks, we're at 90, 98% happiness for what they participated in. So there's a bit of a disconnect there, but we want to make sure that we are hitting the community, and we'd be happy to go out to any neighborhood meeting, any HOA or Neighborhood Association meeting or just a coffee clutch. We want to know what's going on and what we can do better.
And just my last comment, and I'll be done. As far as, I know during our Black History Month, when we were doing some posts about different people within our parks and who they're named after, it would be really great to see more of that as far as just a highlight of who these parks are named after and why it's so important for us to obviously understand why these parks are placed in some places that they are, to also encourage more participation in some of those parks as well.
I've seen it done elsewhere, where we had the storyboard of those leading fathers, mothers in those buildings that came out of those communities at those facilities. That's something that we can look at as we remodel or redo these facilities. It's a good point.
Any more comments or questions for Doug? Well, much more to come on this this summer, but I think it's very exciting what MAPS Four can mean to parks in terms of facilities and recreational facilities as well, so.
We're looking forward to helping any which way we can on that, too.
Yeah, we'll talk a lot more about that as the months go on. Thank you, Doug. We do have someone who signed up to speak specifically on this item, item 5B, Parks and Recreation Department, and that is Michael Washington. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address and keeping your remarks to three minutes.
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Sir, very, very admirable job I see your department obviously is doing here in Oklahoma City. However, there is a few glitches that brought me here today. For instance, you're charging my young black kids $10 to enter the Douglas Center this summer when we know that poor families in and of themselves do not have the money, sir. Are you kidding me? You're going to charge my young people who for all these years have been going into their Douglas Center for free, and now you want to charge them $10 that we don't have? I'm a working guy, and it hurts me to give $10 up for something that I should have an entitlement to since it's a park in my community and I'm not renting it out. Should it be accessible to me then, especially in the summer when my kids are out of school and have nothing else to do and rely upon that center to go swimming or play basketball or whatever the case is? Are y'all really kidding me? Or are we preparing ourselves for this gentrification process that's already taking place? Very, very important indeed. Yes, you have also spoken about the improvement of Kennedy Park. Great deal, great, great, great. However, once again, when you're talking about closing down the Douglas Park in furtherance of this golf course thing that you have, now, it's such a dilapidated building, but we know it's going to be renovated for them people playing golf for that, don't we? Now, why would you want to move me out of a structure that has a historical significance even though you built something new with a new name, Douglas Center? That's not the same thing. And again, we don't even know the same, name going to remain the same. Interesting, isn't it? Now, not only that, you came with, last year, 1,250 programs offered. Interesting. Now you increased it to 1,870, right? Okay, that's good, impressive, but once again, you're not doing anything good for the African-American community other than, like I just stated, the Kennedy Park. Now you're doing something to Pitts Park. Now, we talk about all these wellness centers and various things going up, which is admirable. I love that. 62 years old, I'm pretty good at shaping myself. However, I have a problem with this, you disregarding, again, our east side here. This has been going on too long, and I'm not calling you, sir, a racist because I don't believe, it's the policies in the system in which you've come in, so don't get me wrong. It's not you. I believe that this racist system here in Oklahoma needs to be greatly improved, and I believe myself as an outsider, I can come in with this park and recreation. Why? Because, again, being a political activist and community activist for the northeast side, nothing gets about Michael Washington. You want to know why? Because the people said, Mr. Washington, go down and talk to this today. Know what Michael Washington does? It's what he does today. And I'm saying to y'all, we need to be treated fairly equally and accessible like every other ethnic group here in America. We need to be treated like blacks, human beings, not like blacks, excuse me, I'm not black, I'm an African-American anyway. A lot of people say, oh, black guy, this black guy did that. That's a demeaning type of attitude, so don't cross me with that one. Now, in closing, I would like to meet with this gentleman and to see what we can do about rearranging this discriminatory, very harsh charge that is being placed for my kids. Now, if we don't change it, in closing, sir, without biting my tongue, sir, we will be filing a lawsuit. Michael Washington's famous for them. And we will also be having a news media there, and you're going to explain to more than just a few people. So again, we could probably prevent that by sitting down at the table and talking to Michael Washington. And again, thank y'all very much for allowing me this opportunity to speak for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, so next up, we have the Planning Department and our new Assistant City Manager, Aubrey McDermott, former Planning Director, is going to make the presentation for us on the budget.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Aubrey McDermott. I apologize, our interim director, Jeff Butler, was really excited about getting this opportunity to do this and then was disappointed when he found out he'd be on vacation today. So I'm actually excited to get to do this myself because I won't be able to do this much longer. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to do this. I wanted to say that I also shared Doug Cooper's budget envy of the Utilities Department, getting ready to present a $29 million budget to you for the Planning Department as well. You can find our budget on page C, 127 of the Budget Book. I'm trying to follow suit with Doug. He was very entertaining with his. I failed to put any pictures of council members' family or any videos of staff exercising or famous people, so I hope I can get through this. I'll have to step up the game next year. Anyway, I wanted to say I'm so proud of our city's budgeting process. I'm so proud of the fact that our city uses a system like Leading for Results, a strategic business planning process. In my tenure with the city, we used to, we didn't used to do it this way, and I don't think that it surprises anybody here to see a planner standing in front of you saying that I believe in the benefit of good planning and that this system that we use includes understanding what our goals are for the council priorities, for our community, what the community wants and needs, ways that we can strategize, how to get there efficiently, and how we can implement our actions with accountability. So the mission of the Planning Department is kind of the root of the philosophy of the planning profession in that we would like to guide the growth and development of our city over the long term. We want to have a vibrant city. We want to grow in a sustainable way, and we want to ensure that our current and future residents and businesses can thrive in Oklahoma City. The Planning Department has 47 positions. We work in four different divisions in the Planning Department. The Administration Division of the Planning Department also houses the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs and the Office of Sustainability. And the current Planning Division works with development codes. It manages the special design districts in the city like Bricktown, Historic Preservation Districts, Downtown, Urban Design Districts that include areas like the Asian District, Paseo, Uptown. And then the Plan Development and Implementation Division is the division that develops our long-range plans, like Plan OKC or Bike Walk OKC or the Downtown Development Framework. This division also manages the Neighborhood and Commercial District Revitalization Program. That's a recent change that we've made in the last couple of years. This has brought together planners that are working in the same work section, under the same work section, who work with programs that have a lot of strong overlap. So the Commercial District Revitalization Program and the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative Program do similar functions, one for commercial districts and one for neighborhoods, and now they're working together under one umbrella. We also have the City's Transportation Planning Program housed in this division. And last, the Community Development, the Housing and Community Development Division, it's our largest division. It manages the federally funded grant programs that serve our primarily low to moderate-income residents, and this division works on stabilizing neighborhoods, rehabilitating housing, providing new affordable housing, redeveloping brownfields, and addressing homelessness. And I like to describe this diverse work across the city's Planning Department as going from the 10,000-foot view with the long-range plans down to the boots-on-the-ground, really helping people where they live. So although the purpose of this presentation today is to talk to you about our budget, our budget was really incredibly simple this year. It's not really the focus of what I'd like to share. I'd like to talk about some things more in-depth with the Planning Department. Overall, though, this year's budget in the Planning Department maintained the same general fund portion as we did last year. There were no real significant changes. And I think the Planning Department does so incredibly much with what I think is a very modest budget of $29 million. The general fund portion of our budget is $4 million, and that supports all the programs and employees except those in the Housing and Community Development Division. The bulk of the department's budget comes from approximately $25 million in our federal HUD grants, the Office of Housing and Urban Development, and that supports the staff and programs mostly in that Housing and Community Development Division. And that amount fluctuates from year to year depending on how much is appropriated from HUD to the city. We try to maximize the amount of grant dollars that support the programs, and we try to be as efficient as possible with how we administer the administrative costs that we get from those grants. And so this year, we had a few planners that received promotions, and we took advantage of that minor reorg that I talked about to create some salary savings, and that reduced our administrative costs in those federally funded positions by about $60,000. It was a great benefit to us. So the big takeaway from this presentation today for you is to show you how the alignment and the continuity and the reinforcement of the city council's priorities and then the community's vision and goals through our comprehensive plan and the Planning Department's strategic business plan overlap with each other, and they set us toward that path of implementing our shared goals. So as you know, the city council establishes priorities, updates them every two years. These guide the work of our organization, and these priorities direct staff how we need to focus our efforts. And I want to just highlight two of the city council priorities today as I talk about the Planning Department's work. I want to talk about promoting safe, secure, and thriving neighborhoods and also developing a transportation system that supports everyone. So the city's comprehensive plan, Plan OKC, was adopted in 2015, and the Planning Department uses this plan to guide our work plan, and you'll see this reflected in our strategic business plan in a moment. The development of the plan took seven years. It had extensive community engagement, and this plan expresses the vision and the goals of the community as expressed by seven overarching big ideas that you see on your slide. All of these big ideas do relate to council priorities, but you can see that the five that are checked on this next slide, sorry, Aubrey, we have two Aubreys working for you today. This next slide shows how the overlap of the big ideas in Plan OKC are shown in council priorities. So five of these seven overlap. There you go. All right. So let's go, there you go, right there. The comprehensive plan breaks down elements and components that comprise our city into these chapters that you see. And as you know, cities are comprised of so many interconnected things. We have social, physical, natural systems, and the physical and built environment, which is made of our buildings and open spaces and the transportation network. And socially, we're connected through neighborhoods, and we are enriched through the cultural and recreational opportunities like Mr. Cooper talked about. And the systems that keep the machine of our city running include our efficient public services and a strong economy. So you can see those are reflected in these element chapters of the comprehensive plan. And several of those chapters are put to use to support those two council priorities I want to talk about today. Promoting safe, secure, and thriving neighborhoods is supported by the Live OKC or Neighborhoods Element, Play OKC, which is Parks and Recreation, and Enrich OKC, which is Preservation, Community Appearance, and Culture. And our transportation system is supported primarily by Connect OKC. So the first council priority I'd like to highlight is thriving neighborhoods. This emphasizes the revitalization and neighborhood quality, appearance, and safety within our city's neighborhoods. When we were doing Plan OKC, we did several studies to help us understand what we had and where we were going. One of those studies that relates to the thriving neighborhoods priority is the Housing Market and Preference and Demand Study of 2013. This study considered how we support neighborhoods in our city. We need to know what we have, what we need, and how to prioritize our limited resources. We wondered where people lived, what mattered to our residents, where people wanted to move, and what factors influenced where people chose to go. So the Housing Market Preference and Demand Study concluded that people cared more about the characteristics of their neighborhood rather than the house they lived in itself. Residents wanted quality. They wanted to feel like they were part of a community. They wanted to feel safe in their neighborhoods. They wanted to walk and ride bicycles to where they wanted to go. They wanted to have parks within walking distance and work within walking distance, shopping and entertainment nearby. And above all, the number-one rated priority for our citizens was safety. The Housing Market and Demand Study also came about with several recommendations. Instead of reading these recommendations, I just want to show you that these are the basis for the recommendations and policies in the comprehensive plan. We're actively implementing every single one of these recommendations. And this is a page from the LFR Strategic Business Plan where we start to define our issues and how they tie back to council priorities, and we've developed strategies to try to achieve our goals. I have three of these issues of the I have three of these issues of the Planning Department's Strategic Business Plan that tie back to the Thriving Neighborhoods Council Priority. The first is urban revitalization. And we know that urban decay or urban decline is really, it's inevitable, it's an inevitable part of a city's growth. And we know that if we don't address it, older districts and neighborhoods are vulnerable. They'll continue to decline. We need to maintain an appropriate quantity and quality of homes that are affordable to the majority of our workforce so that people can live near where they work. They can enjoy the full spectrum of city services. They can enjoy retail and entertainment nearby and take advantage of public transportation and other active transportation options like walking and cycling. So the department's strategies to spur urban revitalization include focusing our resources in areas that are experiencing decline to help strengthen them. Our CDBG grants and the CDRP program, Commercial District Revitalization Program, and the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative Program are the primary tools that we use to support urban revitalization. The next issue we identified is community development. We call out specific things that contribute to declining community vitality that can impact the city's ability to provide services and attract economic development. These are issues like crime or poverty, homelessness, public health issues, education, community involvement in neighborhood schools, and a lack of affordable housing. Our Community Development and Social Services Program helps us combat these issues, and we can impede further decline and deterioration of our neighborhoods and business districts. We're strategically using our community development resources in those targeted revitalization areas, and we're working to improve community appearance and working hand-in-hand with our many partners to assist the needs of our city's most vulnerable residents. And the third issue is sustainable growth. It's our responsibility to guide the city's growth in a way that promotes quality of life, efficient service provision, and our human, environmental, and economic health. And comprehensive plans help guide many different types of decisions, understanding that each action that we take contributes to the cumulative effects of growing and changing in our environment. That can affect things like the cost and the quality of our public services, our infrastructure and maintenance costs, the stability and strength of our neighborhoods, environmental and public health, and the functionality of our multimodal transportation system and our capacity to support it. So the same strategies that we just talked about that we apply for urban revitalization and community development also support growing in a more sustainable way. And in addition, we really want to improve our transportation system so we can offer more options and modes of transportation to people. And last, we want to be able to improve the tools that regulate how development is done in our city, and we're in the beginning of a multi-year process to update our development codes. So as I mentioned a moment ago, the city receives approximately $25 million in federal grants, both through the annual allocations from HUD and our competitive grants. The Planning Department's Housing and Community Development Division offers these funds to multiple partner agencies and nonprofits each year, and they assist with various services from providing assistance for rehabilitation of existing homes to building new affordable homes to providing shelter and housing for people who are homeless. Okay? And a few of those programs that influence neighborhood revitalization support homeownership, infill development, and those programs are the Down Payment Assistance Program, the Home Affordable Housing Program, and the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative. And I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the accomplishments that we had last year. Last year, the Community Action Agency and Neighborhood Housing Services, which are the city's Down Payment Assistance Professional Service Providers, assisted 47 low-to-moderate-income families with down payment assistance to purchase new homes. The DPA program leveraged about $6 for each dollar of program funding within that time. Also, our CHODOs, which are the community housing development organizations, built and sold nine houses, and two others were completed and sold by our partner, the Urban Renewal Authority, in one of our Strong Neighborhoods Initiative neighborhoods, Culbertson's East Highland. The Strong Neighborhoods Initiative Program, it's a limited-capacity neighborhood revitalization program that provides funding and assistance to certain selected neighborhoods, provides that assistance over a period of several years until we can see once declining neighborhoods start tipping toward long-term sustainability. The program began in 2013, and we've worked in five different neighborhoods, providing rigorous community engagement, holistic planning strategies, and thoughtful public and private investments. We're currently working in Capital View, Capitol Hill, Culbertson's East Highland. And some of our original SNI neighborhoods included Klassen Tenpan and Klassen's North Highland Parked. Each neighborhood identifies their own priorities and needs, and you can see here the range of improvements that have been funded to build and rehabilitate homes, provide infrastructure and amenities to those neighborhoods, and even provide after-school programs to our residents. Housing assistance doesn't just provide housing quality in neighborhoods. It also has a spin-off effect in that it affects community appearance and the overall quality of life for our residents. Our Housing Rehabilitation Program provides financial assistance to the qualifying low-to-moderate-income homeowners in the inner core of Oklahoma City in an area defined as the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area. The Home Exterior Maintenance Program provides grants to homeowners to repair existing homes, and the Community Development Block Grant Funds are used for emergency repairs caused by things that are emergent health and safety issues. Home funds are used to provide loans for rehabilitating the whole house up to the minimum property standards. This last year, we completed 61 exterior maintenance rehabilitation projects and 19 whole-house rehabilitations. CDBG and Home funded the construction of 65 affordable units through several of our partners. And one of our partners, the Community Action Agency, helped provide emergency plumbing, roofing, heat and air, and other urgent repairs to 74 homes last year. And although we have more need than funding to assist everyone, I think we're making a difference every year. We help hundreds of families and individuals afford to live in decent housing and in stable, safe neighborhoods. How do we know we're making a difference? Well, the Leading for Results Strategic Business Planning Process uses performance measures to track our progress. Two of the measures that we use to gauge progress toward our goal of thriving neighborhoods are taken from our annual citizen survey. And we want Oklahoma City to be above the national average for people who think that the appearance of our city is satisfactory or above satisfactory and those who feel safe in their neighborhoods. We also are tracking how we measure, or we're measuring and tracking how many people who are previously homeless that remain in permanent housing for more than six months. Here's how we're doing. This graph shows the past five years of responses from the citizen survey. They were asked to rate several factors that measure the quality of their neighborhood. The red bar on the top is the 2018 results, and all of our results from 2018 increased from the previous years except for sense of community. Unfortunately, that seems to be declining every year, so we know we need to make further efforts to improve our sense of community in our neighborhoods. The vertical red line shows our target. Our target is 65%. And we use this citizen survey to help us know where we need to focus our efforts and how we know what we're doing is working. And as I mentioned a minute ago, that that housing study confirmed that safety is the most important factor for people in their neighborhoods. And this measure, which is at the bottom of this graph, shows how people rate safety in their neighborhoods. We've consistently met and exceeded our target of 65%. We take this very seriously. We know how important it is, and we're going to be striving to do a better and better job every year. And then we measure the strength of our community and neighborhoods by monitoring progress in addressing homelessness. Each year, hundreds of volunteers conduct a snapshot count and survey people who are homeless. It's called a point-in-time count. It includes people that are staying in three different locations throughout Oklahoma City at that one, in that one early morning in February. Those are people who are staying in overnight shelters like City Rescue Mission and the Salvation Army, people who are staying in those transitional housing programs like rehabs or sober living programs, and then also those who are unsheltered, people who are sleeping outside or on the street, in campsites, in vacant housing, or in their cars. We really, we estimate that the number of actual homeless in Oklahoma City is typically four to five times the number of this one-night census. So you can see the number in 2018 was about 1,183 people. Multiply that by four to five times to get an actual number. The top graph is the point-in-time count for the past eight years, and the bottom graph is how many people of that total were unsheltered in that category, living on the streets. And as you can see, that count fluctuates in both graphs. It's dependent on many factors for the point-in-time count. But one finding of note is although the total homeless count in 2018 was the lowest since 2010, the number of people who are unsheltered or living on the streets was the highest since 2008. And we're currently working on helping this group by increasing the number of low-barrier shelter beds. The local nonprofit City Care is on track to open an all-population, low-barrier shelter with approximately 200 beds. We hope that will really impact next year's count of the street homeless. We're also focusing on homeless youth through new youth assistance programs being offered by HUD. In 2019, a local provider organization, CSU Youth, opened youth shelters and drop-in centers. Pivot, which was formerly Youth Services of Oklahoma County, has also begun the construction of a tiny home development for youth. It will eventually number 85 units. So hopefully, we'll be assisting with that population as well. And ultimately, we want to find, and we want people to find and remain in permanent housing. And we measure the number of people being housed through the Continuum of Care Program. In 2013, we began using the Housing First approach in all of our permanent housing programs. This means moving people directly from the street or shelters into housing without preconditions such as sobriety. Case managers work with these clients to try to address the causes that led to homelessness in the first place. And this approach has been shown to have higher success rates in keeping people housed as well as being more cost-effective. The Continuum of Care Permanent Housing Programs regularly maintain an 80% to 95% retention rate. And although 2018 saw a slight drop from 2017, or 2017 saw a slight drop from 2018, two new permanent housing projects applied for assistance in our 2018 Continuum of Care competition in September, and we hope to increase retention rates in the coming years to ultimately achieve 100%. And I'm excited to talk about taking further steps. This year, in April, the mayor instituted a task force to oversee the development of a homelessness strategy for Oklahoma City. The task force has more than a dozen very passionate, dedicated people that represent multiple groups that touch the issue of homelessness every day. This group will work with a professional consultant who will meet with service providers and others in the community to identify our existing conditions, what gaps and needs we have, and develop a strategy for everyone to be able to pull together with focused effort on the role they play in addressing homelessness. And we hope this strategy will be completed by next spring, and we can present that to you then. And the last council priority I wanted to emphasize is develop a transportation system that works for all residents. The Planning Department's Transportation Planning Program focuses on increasing mobility options and opportunities for people to get where they need to go via public transportation or by walking or cycling. The city council adopted our city's first comprehensive pedestrian, bicycle, and trail master plan last year. This plan is already being put to great use to divide our priorities and investments through our capital improvements program and funding for grant applications. So you might recognize Better Streets, Safer City program, which is the combination of the 2017 GEO bond and our temporary penny sales tax program. This is a great example of how BikeWalk OKC identified our highest priority projects, and they were taken into these two funding programs to help fill gaps in our sidewalk network and build bicycle infrastructure that connects people to places they need to go. Between these two programs, we're investing $350 million and $240 million on street resurfacings, street enhancements, sidewalks, trails, and bicycle facilities. Planning Department has put two new measures in our Strategic Business Plan. We have the number of miles of trails and sidewalks constructed and the number of commute trips that people take in Oklahoma City by walking, bicycling, or using transit. I don't have those numbers for you today, but in the next presentation to you, we hope to be showing how these investments are going to be increasing people's use of alternative transportation modes. And this is just a series of maps showing you how far we've come to give you some perspective of what we have today and what we have funded and will be built soon. So this first map is showing our existed, existing and funded trails. The yellow is the existing trail system, and you can see how through the 2007 bond, 2017 bond, MAPS 3, and the Better Streets, Safer City Sales Tax Program, we're starting to build out our trail network according to our long-term Trails Master Plan. The next group of maps is the existing bicycle facilities that we have. This map shows those facilities that are striped on streets with either charos or charo symbols or signage for bike routes, and the dark brown is our dedicated lanes that are on the ground today. This map shows the bike facilities of all types that are reflected in the BikeWalk OKC plan. Those were not built yet. Some may be funded, and I'm going to show you that in the next slide. These are the bicycle facilities funded in the 2017 bond. And the next slide are facilities that are funded in the Better Streets, Safer City Sales Tax Program. And the next slide layers on the bicycle facilities funded through grants. The Planning Department actively pursues federal grants. The Transportation Alternatives Program has funded demonstration corridors in Oklahoma City. These are bicycle facilities that will be protected bike lanes. These are shown in red. These protected bike lanes will go around our downtown and have spurs that branch off to our most populated neighborhood and employment centers. And so when we look at everything together, we look at our existing and funded bicycle facilities with all the different sources of funding, we can start to see how these capital improvements will help connect people via bicycle infrastructure to many different destinations. And then we layer back on those that are unfunded from BikeWalk OKC. So we still have more infrastructure to build out, and we will be pursuing ways to do that. And last is the sidewalk network. This map shows the existing sidewalk network in yellow. This next map shows identified sidewalk needs. These are areas in Oklahoma City that BikeWalk OKC has highlighted as connecting the gaps in the sidewalk system. We also receive requests from city council and the community all the time that we add to our city's database that goes into this map for sidewalk needs. And I want to show you that what we've done, in 2007, we start, city started building and constructing sidewalks, which typically wasn't a city requirement. Sidewalks traditionally have been built by developers as development has occurred in Oklahoma City. In 2007, as we were funding street resurfacing and street widening projects, we were building sidewalks on those arterial streets. So you can see that as the street network was being improved, sidewalks were going in mostly along those section-line roads. The 2017 bond was different in that we began filling in from those arterial streets back into neighborhoods, to employment centers, and to places of education. We also funded through the General Fund and CIP some additional sidewalks. And layering on top of that is the Better Street, or the MAPS 3 sidewalks continuing to build inward towards our population center. And then lastly, the Better Streets, Safer City Sales Tax. So when we go to the last map, we can see where the existing sidewalks are in yellow, and we can start to see how we're really filling in and funding the construction of sidewalks where they didn't exist before. And with that, I have planning staff, my planning colleagues, and Eric is here, too, if we have any questions about transportation, better streets, homelessness, or anything the Planning Department is doing to support your council priorities.
The federal grants we receive for bicycle facilities, can you expand a little bit on that? What do we get annually, and how are we using that, and how are we determining where we're going to use?
Okay. Well, we don't really get an appropriation annually, but each year we do apply for the available grants that are offered through ACOG for those federal transportation dollars. And I don't have the number that we received last year. It's a competitive process. And so we typically use the BikeWalk OKC, well, not typically, we are now using BikeWalk OKC to help us identify priority projects that qualify. The Transportation Alternative Program has a kind of a priority area in that they're trying to fund bicycle infrastructure that connects to transit, employment centers and populations, sidewalks that connect to transit. It's trying to bring all the elements of a whole transportation network together. So since BikeWalk OKC has identified some of those priority areas, we can very competitively apply for those grants. It also requires a match, and fortunately, the city's investing through the Sales Tax Program and the GEO bond, so we can take those dollars and leverage them to receive more federal funds. And if you'd like some specific numbers on what we've received last year, I can pull those for you.
Any other comments or questions for Aubrey?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Our last presentation is from Mark Cranenberg, Airport's Director, who'll be presenting the airport's budget.
Mark Cranenberg, Airport's Director, and pleasure to be with you this morning and have Karen Carney assisting me, who Karen Carney assisting me, who is the Public Information and Marketing Coordinator, and Tara Summerlin, who is my Business Manager. You can find the airport's budget on page C3 in your budget book to remind you that we operate three airports for the City of Oklahoma City: Will Rogers World Airport, Wiley Post Airport, and Clarence E. Page Airport. The airport's mission is to provide for the operations and management and development of the city's three airports for our tenants, our users, and the general public so that they can have a safe and efficient transportation system. Before getting into the department's issues and some of our performance indicators, I would like to give you a brief overview of the Airport Trust budget. If you look at the total airport charges, we're anticipating a little over $63.6 million. These are major revenue categories we have each year at the airport. And they are mainly comprised of building rents, which is from lease payments for hangars and buildings that the trust owns. We also have landing fees, which is a calculated rate per 1,000 pounds of landed weight for passengers and freight carriers. Parking revenues is generated from our public parking operation for our parking garages and service lots. We also have concessions, so we get a gross percentage of concessions of the food and beverage and retail concessions in the terminal building as well as rental car concessions for the rental car center. We have fuel sales, which is a rate per gallon for all aviation fuel that is retailed on our airports or from those tenants that have self-fueling privileges. The customer facility charges, these are the $4.50 per transaction day at the rental car center that a rental car customer is assessed, and this pays for the debt service for the facility, the operations and maintenance of the facility, as well as the buses. We have a variety of other airport charges, which is mainly lease components that are maintenance reimbursement, apron fees, and ground rentals. Well, we also have other sources of revenue as well, a little over $13.8 million that we're projecting. Oil and gas revenue, we still get some on the airport, and we use this mainly for our matching, sponsor match funds for the grants that we receive from the Federal Aviation Administration for airfield improvements. We have some interest on our money market account, the passenger facility charges. This is the $4.50 that you see on an airplane ticket, and this supports our capital program. And each year, we get certain federal and state participation from the Federal Aviation Administration and the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission, and this comes in the form of grants for eligible airfield projects or to purchase certain types of equipment. We also have carryover, which we're anticipating $35.5 million. This is mainly carryover from our project fund, which is used for our capital program. It also includes the escrow account we use to maintain several facilities at the Mike Monroni Aeronautical Center. And then we have revenue bond proceeds, which are the portion of bond proceeds that we intend to use on construction for next year. So the total revenues of $77,404,000, the carryover, and the reserve, excuse me, the revenue bond proceeds comprise the trust budget of $141,340,000. If you look at our uses of funds, the total operating expenditures we're planning in a little over $51.9 million. This involves other services and fees, and this is where we mainly have our major contracts, such as our parking management contract, our aircraft rescue and firefighting contract, the janitorial contract for all of our facilities, including the terminal building, and also the supplemental security contract. We have commodities, which are just various services and supplies. We have debt requirements, which is the prior financing we've done on the, such as the rental car center, the most recent five-story parking garage that was constructed and the terminal expansion. And then the transfer to the airport's cash fund, this is the, actually, the department operating account. We have reserves, which are funds that are estimated to be received in fiscal year 20 that are intended to be used on construction. And a significant amount of capital outlay, you see almost $87 million, and a lot of that, of course, is with the terminal building. The terminal expansion project. Want to bring your attention to just a few of the completed projects we've done. We've sort of rolled in the aggregate for Will Rogers World Airport and Wiley Post Airport, and we carve out Mike Monroni Aeronautical Center. A couple of noteworthy projects for Will Rogers, we completed the Hangar I and I C expansion where we enlarged those hangars so that larger aircraft could be worked on. That increases the capability of an MRO at Will Rogers World Airport. We also completed the two-story, finally, the Garage A waterproofing project, and we completed the wayfinding garage project. At Wiley Post, we completed the general aviation maintenance facility and did several airfield improvements involving runways, taxiways, airfield signage, and also lighting. And then at Mike Monroni, we have a variety of building improvements that we completed for our support of that, of the FAA. Now, I'd like to go into some of the department issues and some of our performance indicators. Our first issue relates to factors that impact resources for funding operations and capital. The nature of the airline industry and its activity can be very volatile, and the number of air carrier operations and passengers can dramatically affect several revenue categories, such as parking, concessions, and passenger facility charges. So our strategy is to increase and stabilize airport revenue. One of the measures we have for this issue is to maintain a food and beverage and retail concession growth of at least 2% a year, and you can see that we're meeting that target at 2%. I will note in FY '15 and '16, you see that it jumped up pretty significantly. That's when the new Cross Greens Brewery was opened up, and it's been very successful. You can see in FY '14 and '15, it was down because it took about a year to construct that venue. We also have another strategic measure, and this is to maintain our airport parking revenue. This is per transaction growth. We want at least a 2% increase in our growth. And this is an interesting slide because you see our transactions have actually decreased over the last few years. We had a little bit up in FY '17 and '18. And you might think, well, why is that happening when you are having record deployments? And the answer is because the transportation network companies have, that activity has also increased. Now, we did have in FY '16 and '17, there was an increase there, and that was related to a parking rate increase. And you also see some increases in FY '17 and FY '18 and '19. And mainly, we can attribute these that we believe that people are staying in parking longer, in other words, longer stays, or they're transitioning from a lower-priced parking product to our higher-priced parking product. Our second issue relates to factors that we have to react to effectively. If we don't, it could have an impact on staffing, workload, or funding requirements. I've already mentioned how the number of operations and passengers can affect revenue categories, but clearly, we can have fluctuations in the aviation industry. The general aviation industry is dramatically affected by the economy, and we can have safety, security, and environmental requirements that can come from the FAA or the TSA, and those often come in the form of unfunded mandates. And so our strategy is to improve the airport environment for our travelers and tenants through long-term planning and infrastructure improvements, such as our garage improvements we're planning in the next few years and our terminal expansion project. A couple of measures with this line of business, we track the percentage of airport certification work orders that are completed within three business days. I will tell you, in order for us to continue to be able to have airlines operate at Will Rogers, there's a three-day annual inspection. The FAA puts us through dozens and dozens and dozens of compliance criteria. We always have a very high target on this. Last year, or this year, we received a 99% rating. Our target is 96. We inspect ourselves daily on these same categories. We also track the percentage of days that we have zero security incidents. And by a security incident, I'm talking about the 3,400 people that are batched at Will Rogers that have access, different levels of access for different areas. If they leave a door unlocked or a passenger loading bridge unlocked, and we consider that a security incident, although it's not a serious breach, so I don't want to be dramatic with it. But we do track all of that very, very carefully. In the general aviation line of business, one of the things, and I've been associated with a lot of general aviation airports through my career, is the percentage of itinerant takeoffs and landings at Wiley Post. Itinerant being someone that's not based at the airport. We have about 350 aircraft based at Wiley Post. So when I see transient aircraft coming in, landing, and taking off, that indicates there's a lot of business activity occurring at the airport and in our city, which is good. You see that we're bumping up our target for the percentage of days that the airport has a runway closed at Wiley Post, 41%. And that's because of the runway project that we have planned for this year. We'll have one of our two parallel runways that will be closed for an extended period of time. Our third issue deals with air service, and I think you know that we've been doing a very good job attracting air service. We know that Oklahoma City's population and business activity is just going to continue to demand more air service, and so we want to continue to do our best to attract that. One of the measures is to track the growth of passenger deployments for at least 2% a year. Historically, if you look at our comprehensive annual financial report, you'll see every year, when we go back 10 years, we're about a 1.6% increase. Now, we've had some dramatic passenger deployments the last couple of years, and that is a bit out of the ordinary. I will report to you that through January, through April of this year, we had 3.3% more growth than the January through April of last year. And remember, that comes off of the heels of two record calendar years, '17 and '18 passenger growth. Another measure that we use is to track our cost per plane passenger to no more than 5% a year. And if you look at this over the last five years, you see that our, what we call a CPE, this is a very important statistic for the airlines because it tells them how expensive is it to operate at Will Rogers. And when you take a small, medium hub airport such as us, you can see the CPA on average is much higher than what ours typically is. So the airlines, they love us for that fact. I've showed the route map to you several times. Obviously, we have fantastic air service now to the East and West Coast, 28 nonstop destinations. And since I last visited with you on the Robust Economy presentation, American Airlines recently announced nonstop service to Miami, starting on December the 18th, I believe, tickets are on sale now. We can also have several new markets and enhancements that can benefit air service. The four ways mainly, we get enhancements as a new carrier comes to town. You may have a carrier that decides to throw in a new destination or a new nonstop. You can also change the frequency or the amount of times per day that a carrier wants to fly to a certain destination, and they can also upgrade their aircraft, which translates into more seats available. Ongoing efforts, I mentioned this before also, New York LaGuardia we're working on, also still trying to attract JetBlue and Spirit. Karen will be attending an air service conference in the next few weeks and talking to several airlines about our air service, both the incumbent air service and also new air service. I mentioned that there are several issues that can impact air service, the economy, certainly. I discussed the financial recession when I last visited with you. Airlines routinely will adjust their network capacity, so any kind of constraints on that will affect air service. And operational strategies, such as mergers, obviously, can affect air service. Fuel prices dramatically affect air service. It can actually make some aircraft not economical to operate. National and world events are always important, and I just want to point out that real ID is still a very important issue for us here in Oklahoma City. Our last extension only goes till October 10th, and Oklahoma is still a noncompliance state. Our last issue deals with the amount of land that we have. We're very fortunate. We have 8,100 acres at Will Rogers World Airport, and we've been very successful this past year facilitating the FedEx sorting and distribution facility, the SkyWest Airlines Maintenance Hangar, and the Amazon Fulfillment Center. So we want to continue our plans for Lariat Landing. Not doing this would prevent the Airport Trust from receiving long-term self-sustaining revenue, but it also prevents the city from the benefits of more jobs and more sales tax. One measure in the construction line of business I just want to talk about is our project costs as a result to change orders and amendments. Really proud of the staff on this. We try to limit our costs to no more than 5% a year or per project, and as you can see, we've been very, very low on that. So happy to see that continue. In the maintenance line of business, we track the percentage of operating hours where our major mechanical systems are functioning. You may not think that's important, but if the passenger loading bridge isn't working or your baggage system isn't working, or the HVAC is not working, we hear that because these things are very important to our tenants and the public. We also track the percentage of vehicles and equipment available for use. This is for critical operations, such as ice and snow removal equipment, our parking shuttle buses, and our fire trucks. Very quickly, go through some of the projects that we have ongoing. We've talked about the terminal expansion. Remind you, this is the new four gates that we're expanding to start the East Concourse, the new eight-lane checkpoint, meters and greeter lobbies, increasing public circulation and new concessions. One they haven't talked to you about is Terminal Drive. The airport maintains Terminal Drive both inbound and outbound, and so we will be doing the first phase of that very soon, which we will be doing reconstruction for the majority of Terminal Drive from 54th Street to the terminal building. And some of that will actually go down to one lane. Terminal Drive wayfinding project, this, if you look in the lower right, you see our existing signage. We finally wanted to wait for a couple of bigger projects to get finished before we rolled out this project, so you see the new signage that will, it will look like in the upper lefts. One of the other projects that we put on hold because we wanted to get through with our Garage A two-story waterproofing project, as well as C, make sure we didn't have any impacts when we started the terminal expansion project, was the Station Two rehabilitation project. The escalators and elevators that you come to out of the terminal building when you go into the pedestrian tunnel, that first station is Station Two. And, excuse me, we're going to be taking the escalators out, which are very narrow for today's bags, and installing two new elevators and renovating the existing two elevators. So we'll have four fast-moving, working elevators when we get through with that project. And since we were first going to do this project, we actually are going to replace two moving walkways as well. They're the two longest ones that we have. This is sort of a vicinity map. I'm going to talk about Lot Four, which is the new parking lot that I mentioned when we did the parking rate increase presentation a few weeks ago, but this kind of shows you four different projects we're working on. I'll concentrate on Lot Four here in a moment, but you can see the shaded areas on Terminal Drive that we'll be working on. That project is out to bid now. Another project out to bid is the resurfacing of Lot One, which is our economy lot. We'll be constructing that in two phases, and we're going to relocate the cell phone lot to a better location. We think this is the location it's going to be, but what we're striving for is for a location that's kind of like a rest stop on a highway where you pull off, you take care of your business, and you pull right back on. We think it'll be very intuitive for the public. If you look at parking lot number four, this is the one that I told you that we would be constructing in the next couple of years. It's under design now. It'll have 800 spaces. It'll be all brand-new concrete, and every spot will be canopied, which is a benefit for people that want their cars covered. And it will have dedicated shuttle service to the terminal building. It's right across from the lot number three or the control tower. At Wiley Post, we're continuing our improvements to maintain the airfield. This is the last project that we will be doing. The entire airfield at Wiley Post has been completely overhauled, all runways, taxiways, signage, and lighting. And then various building improvements we do at Mike Monroni Aeronautical Center. Our responsibilities for over 30 buildings over there are to do structural, exterior repairs, roofs, and pavements, and we have also infrastructure improvements. And this is mainly where we do a lot of work. We're responsible for the entire electrical grid on the campus, which is 1,000 acres as well, as the natural gas distribution system. I mentioned the department operating account. This is organized by lines of business, so $20,011,000. We do have a few changes to last year's budget. There's a slight increase in insurance benefits and salaries, $382,000. Little bit higher increase in city-provided services. These are chargebacks to the airport's department, mainly because we've asked for the airport, excuse me, the police department to add two new dispatchers and police service technicians to support ground transportation at the airport outside baggage claim. We're adding three positions and maintenance electrician. We have two. We haven't added one in 30 years. With all our facilities, we think it's about time. The federal planning specialist, we're adding one of those because of our compliance requirements with the FAA. And then a lot of departments that are larger, we have 125 assigned, have training and safety specialists. We've never had one before. We want to reduce our loss injury and also reduce our workers' comp claims. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have on either the Airport Trust budget or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you.
So that concludes our budget presentations. The departments will be presenting. Next week, we'll come back with the budget adoption. We'll have a recap on the budget and bring that back and just kind of hit the highlights on the budget and bring that back to the council.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Anything else anyone wants to say about the budget today? If not, we'll move on to items from council. I might start us off, not to color what you might want to say today, but I would have to bring attention to the fact that this is M.T. Berry's last week on the job after, how many years, Mr. City Manager?
Almost 49.
Forty-nine years as a city employee, and following hard upon his retirement is his wife, Diana Berry, who has been our longtime Personnel Director. In fact, so long she was the only department head that Jim Couch didn't hire. She came, she predated- She predated him. So, it's a remarkable record of service between the two of them, and, you know, they leave an incredible legacy here, and we just couldn't do the things we do as a community without people like the Berry's. And I certainly wanted to mention that and pay homage to them today. They'll have a party later this week.
Right. I appreciate that. We will have recognition this later this week and have a retirement party. Both Diana and M.T. have just, they made such a difference in the city throughout their careers for so long. You know, M.T., starting in the '70s, difficult time for African-Americans, you know, really establishing themselves, and he became a leader very quickly and has some incredible stories just in his career. And for both of them, just what they've done for our community, what they've done in the city organization, their leadership has been fantastic, and I really hate to see them go. We're going to keep them as plugged in as we can, even in their retirements.
Yeah. Well, I mean, 49 years. Like, I understand. You can't work here forever, but an amazing level of gratitude we all have. Let's go down here, Councilman Cooper.
Yeah. I would say congratulations to M.T. and Diana for their years of service. Hopefully, I'll have an opportunity to speak with them outside of their official capacity to learn some more about what the '70s and '80s and '90s were like and what pitfalls we need to avoid going forward as a city. And I also just wanted to thank Debbie Martin and everyone who worked with my Jefferson Middle School Statesmen, Councilwoman Nice, Councilwoman Hammond, I believe, Councilwoman Stone cipher, here, Councilwoman McAtee. Did you get to say a couple of words to them as well? No? Someone told me this was true? I don't know. And then, the mayor, I think you said?
Well, we were kind of all together outside at the time.
Yeah. I heard it was a big deal. No, really, thank you all for that. It was really super cool for those students to get to meet you all and hear from you. And, yeah.
I would just like to echo the comments about M.T. and Diana Berry. They certainly deserve a few years of non-stress parts in their lives. They both handled very important aspects of the city's operations, did terrific jobs, each of them, and they'll certainly be missed. And again, I'm glad to hear they'll continue in some capacity in terms of involvement with the city because they both have tremendous amount of skills and experience. Thank you.
I also wanted to commend and thank Mr. and Mrs. Berry for their many years of service for the city of Oklahoma City. And obviously, that is going to be a great void when it comes to just the overall looks of our upper management. And also, for Miss, a lot of folks don't know, Ms. Berry, she was my co-facilitator for Loyal Class 1. And that's actually how I met her and knew what she did and her commitment to the city as well as to young people like myself to make sure we understood the civic portion of how Oklahoma City operates. So, I thank her for that, and also to Mr. Berry for his commitment to not only just being a part of the Oklahoma City Police Department, but also his commitment to Oklahoma City as well as the structure of Oklahoma City. I wanted to make mention, we are in the middle of Ramadan Eftar, and last week, I had the pleasure of meeting the Ward 7 council member for Cleveland, Ohio, Bashir Jones, and just our conversations that we were able to exchange about our different communities and different cities. He says they have 17 council members in Cleveland, and I won't even tell you how much they get paid for that. I'll spare you the details, but please Google it and look it up. You will be quite astonished. But obviously, when we have the conversations, we understand our needs are still the same. So, I think that was the great takeaway, that there are still great needs that are similar in a lot of different communities. So, just want to make sure we're continuing that. And yesterday, I had the opportunity to celebrate with our Hindu temple of Oklahoma City, and I am so astonished and just in awe every day of how we get to rediscover Oklahoma City, especially for me, because now I get to rediscover Ward 7. And being born and raised in Ward 7, I never knew that this Hindu temple existed where it is located. So, I would encourage all of us to accept and also to rediscover our cities and our communities and also our interfaith communities when it comes to being inclusive. And it was just a joy to be there and to celebrate their 25th-year anniversary. And I promise you, if, when you have driven into that area where their temple is located, you do not feel like you're in Oklahoma City, just because of the way that building looks. It is amazing to see. So, I took my mom with me, and her being born and raised in Oklahoma and coming to Oklahoma City from Watanga, she was just as shocked and in awe as I was. So, that just tells you, even, you know, when we have some of our other family members or just different people in the community, they also get to discover parts of the cities that we never knew existed. So, I know we'll be having continuous relationships with them, and I remember they did have a program last evening where they had young ladies dancing and young, young men and women dancing. And I said, "Were you all performing at the Christmas?" "They were there for our Christmas celebration in Bricktown."
Yeah, yeah.
And I said, "I remembered, I just remembered the movements." And so, they said, "Yes, we enjoyed that so much." So, just, you know, just the recognition of them and understanding, again, that 25th anniversary and them being intentional about deciding to locate in Oklahoma City those many, many years ago when they brought those families here was very intentional. And I believe this is the only Hindu temple in Oklahoma, if I'm not mistaken, and they reside in Oklahoma City in Ward 7. So, just wanted to make mention of that and just how in awe that I am that we get to rediscover in our positions and see different parts of Oklahoma City every day.
I wanted to thank M.T. and Diana. I learned so much from them, especially the way in which they carried out their jobs, very calm, great demeanor, very kind. And so, I owe them a lot. I learned a lot from them, and I wish them great times in retirement, and I appreciate them being my friend. Thanks.
Indeed. Thank you all. City manager reports? We have two citizens who have signed up to be heard and are Item 8, citizens to be heard. I'll call you both, and then you can organize yourselves however you like. Maya Shadid and Dahlia Shadid. If you wouldn't mind stating your name, address, and keeping your remarks, each of you, to three minutes or less. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Maya Shadid. I live at 5,900 Moss Teller Drive, Apartment 171. Today, I wanted to speak today about our park system. My hope is that as the council considers both this year's budget as well as future allocations, that we all think of the parks first and foremost as one of the most important tools we have to improve our community's public health. If you were to Google the words "park" and "public health," you would be able to spend the entire day reading studies and articles about the ways parks improve our physical, mental, and spiritual health. Parks improve our public health in three principal ways. First, parks improve our physical health. Despite all the fitness facilities and home exercise equipment, a 2013 Rand Corporation study estimates that 14% of moderate exercise and 15% or half of all vigorous, heart-healthy exercise takes place in nearby neighborhood parks. It's not an exaggeration to say that sitting is literally the new smoking. Sitting throughout the day is leading to chronic disease and pretty much killing us. According to the CDC, only 25% of American adults engage in recommended levels of physical activity, and nearly 30% do not engage in leisure-time physical activity at all. This is why the CDC has advocated for more neighborhood parks, as studies have clearly shown that when people have access to parks, they exercise more. A study by the Rand Corporation found that adolescent girls who live close to parks engage in much greater physical activity than those who live far away. Therefore, while downtown parks are amazing, it is our neighborhood parks which are likely to provide the greatest public health benefits. Study after study shows that when people can't reach parks, they often go without exercise, and this is particularly true in low-income communities. Second, parks contribute to our psychological health. There are many studies that establish the sustained improvements in mental health as a result of proximity to green space. These benefits include lower levels of stress and decreased symptoms from both depression and anxiety. Research is showing that for children, interacting with nature leads to reduced levels of attention deficit, improved cognitive ability, and reduced aggressive behavior. Unfortunately, the opposite is also true. If someone in OKC does not have nearby access to neighborhood park and they spend most of their time indoors, they are likely to realize a decrease in their mental health and overall happiness. Third, investing in parks can help advance health equity. There is a direct correlation between the fact that low-income communities and people of color are more likely to suffer from chronic diseases such as diabetes, asthma, and heart disease, and that they are least likely users of green space and the most likely to benefit from parks. One of the largest barriers to children playing is the lack of safe space, particularly in low-income communities. Staying inside leads to a disconnection and social isolation. Conversely, if children are able to interact with other children and play, they develop higher-order cognitive skills, and interaction with caring adults leads to improved social and emotional health. Neighborhood parks help establish a sense of community and shared identity. Research shows that the residents of neighborhoods with greenery and common spaces enjoy stronger social ties. The Trust for Public Land has long advocated that we make a difference in the physical health of our communities by establishing fitness zone areas, which are less than 1,000 square feet with outdoor fitness equipment. Because higher-income communities have much greater access to gyms, the Trust for Public Land believes that the public health impact can be greatest by focusing on these microparks almost exclusively in lower-income neighborhoods. Today, I've only scratched the surface, and I really hope that you guys will continue to explore ways in which we utilize our city parks to improve public health. Thank you so much for letting me speak today.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you for your patience.
My name is Dahlia Shadid, and I live at 5,900 Moss Teller Drive, Apartment 171. Today, I would also like to speak about our park system, but I would like to emphasize that the mere presence of parks does not guarantee public health benefits. In order to capture the mental and physical benefits from parks, they must be well-used by the public. Recently, a comprehensive study of 175 neighborhood parks in 25 major American cities by the combined resources of the Trust for Public Land, the Rand Corporation, and the City Parks Alliances indicates that there are three primary ways that cities can increase utilization of their parks. Better facilities and amenities, a maximum amount of programming and marketing to the public. Many parks do not have enough resources, enough choices and opportunities to appeal to different ages and interests, and so, a mixture of facilities are necessary. Sidewalks or walking trails around the perimeter of the park are very effective at increasing use of parks by seniors, while yoga classes might be more effective for younger people. Of course, one amenity that is very common to everyone is the need for restroom facilities, and the fact that only 1% of Oklahoma City parks have restrooms is almost certainly decreasing the use of our parks and the public health benefit that we would otherwise realize. Other amenities besides restroom facilities that are strongly correlated with park utilization include adequate lighting, access to drinking water, and maintenance of neighborhood parks. According to the study, targeted programming is the key to increasing utilization of parks. Parks need to provide staff to organize programming locally that serves the need of that particular neighborhood. Supervised activities such as dog training, for example, has been shown to increase park use by 48%. The third critical factor identified by the study was for cities to invest in marketing because most people don't know what is available in their parks. According to the study, materials and signs advertising park activities led to more than 60% increases in both the number of park users and the number of hours those users exercised. The primary problem in trying to capture the public health benefits of Oklahoma City parks is so much of what increases utilization of parks is related to programming operations and maintenance of our parks. While it is helpful that the 2017 General Obligation Bond included $130 million in capital improvements for parks, and that consideration is being given to include additional capital improvements in MAPS 4, unless there's an increase in funding for operations and maintenance of our parks, we are unlikely to realize significant public health benefits. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we have no other business on the council agenda, and we are adjourned.